All right, I'd like to go ahead and call to order our finance committee. Thank you for everybody for being here. We're -- it's unprecedented that we're starting on a Thursday at 4:00. But I think the attitude and we want to try something new with our budget season. So tonight, or this afternoon, rather, the agenda is going to be over the all-fund summary and capital projects for 2026. Any questions from my colleagues or any comments? Okay. Administration, Miranda?
That'll do it.
Get away. Oh, Mayor, please.
Thank you, appreciate that. Just to make a few introductory comments, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As you acknowledge, today's budget workshop is a bit of a departure from what we've done in previous years. And my team and I very much appreciate the collaboration of council. I think it was early in the -- this year, that seems like eons ago. But early in 2025, when we talked about how can we work together to help make this process go more efficiently, not only for ease of understanding for our residents to follow along, but in terms of the time demands that really having thorough discussions of the budget take. So trying this workshop approach in an effort to streamline our conversations, take it by -- take a bite of the elephant, maybe, bit by bit, instead of trying to swallow the elephant hole through finance committee meetings, but addressing these in sections so that we can, again, make sure that we are addressing them in detail, that we're being transparent, but also trying to make it a little bit easier for understand, not just for all of us sitting in this room, but also for those at home. Tonight is a presentation of my administration's 2026 budget request. And as you'll hear, the budget reflects the strong economic growth that the city continues to see, and it requests funding or indicates funding requests that will enable us to continue to grow in smart and sustainable manner. The budget process for the administration began back in June. And I know for those of you, and maybe even for those at home that really don't have an understanding of just how much time it takes to put this together. So it really, over the last June, July, August, September, five months, half the year, really has consumed the focus of Director Burry and her finance team, our department heads, many of whom are here this evening, as well as our executive leadership team. What has happened over the course of the last five months has been countless meetings, I would say dozens of meetings, ranging from one-on-one meetings with department heads to full-on group meetings with Director Burry and her team, as well as the executive team members and management team members of each individual department, where we reviewed the requests for budgeting, everything from staffing to programming requests, discussed it, evaluated it, questioned it, reevaluated again, and adjusted accordingly as those discussions continued to happen. During those meetings, we looked not only for what are the impacts and requests going to be for 2026, but also a five-year lookout. What are the longer-term impacts that we're having on operations? And how do we see programming playing out over the next five years as well? So it's not just an isolated look that we take as we go through this budget process. As Director Burry will discuss shortly, the economic success of the city is anticipated to continue into 2026, with economic growth projected to continue to increase our income tax base through 2030. In the coming year, you can expect to see continued investments in our aging infrastructure, making necessary upgrades, expansion of services, especially as we move into the new Gehanna Civic Center, and the implementation of our Gehanna, which will complement existing plans that we have, our capital improvement plan, for example, to ensure that we are fulfilling the community's vision for what they want Gehanna to be, and that we're doing so in a manner where we are investing those dollars wisely, strategically, and in a sustainable manner for the long-term success of this city. And before I officially turn it over to the team who's biting at the bit, waiting to talk about budget numbers, you could tell their excitement, I do want to take a moment to commend Director Burry and her team. I know we have Senior Deputy Director Corey Wybin, Senior Director Schultz, Senior Director Volmer, and our department heads, who are all here as well. It is really a yeoman's job to put this budget together, to have those conversations and have those difficult conversations. And the level of care, commitment, and work that they have devoted to this, I think, is reflective in the quality of the work that they do each and every day, but especially in the budget that you're about to hear. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Director Burry and the two senior directors before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, we just wanted to talk briefly about the schedule, the agenda. Sorry, that's okay. I didn't put this on. So we'll cover the budget calendar, then Director Burry will cover the overall budget assumptions, impact on the fund balances, revenue expenditures. I will cover staffing requests, and Senior Director Schultz will discuss the 2026 capital budget request. So this is a schedule that I sent out earlier today with a couple corrections. So after consulting with chair runner, we divided up the operations department, so you can see those are there on November 17th and November 21st. The directors on each of those days will provide a very brief one slide of their 2026 priorities and how that factored into their budget requests, and then we'll answer any questions that we receive from council and any other ones that come up during the evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Burry to begin.
Good evening. So the first thing that we're going to talk about is what are the overall budget assumptions or the main drivers behind the 2026 budget request? So as was previously mentioned, even though there are slowdowns with the Intel Mega project, the central Ohio area and Gehanna continue to experience economic growth, and that's expected to continue during the five-year period. We don't have any changes planned for service levels going into 2026. And it also includes a budget request to begin implementing our Gehanna. As a reminder, this is a 10-year plan, so the first step will be determining a starting point, and then a path forward to meet the goals identified throughout the various public engagements and the hard work and dedication of the steering committee. Looking at health and prescription insurance coverage, over the years, we've implemented various programs to try to contain healthcare costs. In 2024, we began a complete overhaul of insurance benefits to maintain cost, while creating a better experience for employees and those that are responsible for the administration of the plans. We engaged NFP as the city's insurance broker after an extensive RFP process, and we engaged them to analyze our current plans and then give recommendations. And they basically looked at four different paths that we could have taken. One was to stay with a healthcare consortium. Two was join another consortium. Three was go on our own and be fully funded, more of a traditional plan. And then the last was to become a self-insured entity. After they did extensive research, it was determined we had enough employees to be self-insured, and we can do this with no disruption to employee coverage, no increase to employee premiums, and then saving in excess of $1 million by doing so. And then we're going to discuss how that funding arrangement kind of works and what the mechanisms are for that. We also have a funding request in the 2026 budget to move to the new civic center. Moving the City Hall police and the senior center is a very large undertaking, and we want to make sure we're doing it in the most responsible and efficient manner. And we're also incorporating some change management techniques, right? Nobody likes change. This is going to be a very large change, so we want to make sure our employees are comfortable with it. Also, we have continued utility increases from the city of Columbus. Every year, they've been increasing, and this is expected to continue into 2026. This is the largest part, or the largest part of the proprietary funds request, is for that contracted service, and it kind of generates the driver behind the rate setting. You'll notice when we move on to the fund balance impact that there's a deliberate use of those utility funds, unreserved fund balance, to kind of smooth those rate increases, so there's not one large increase in any one year. So I'm going to back out of this for just a second. My link is not working, but that's all right. One second to find where I have that file. Sorry about that. Now we have the fund balance impact. So this fund balance impact obviously assumes that every dollar budgeted and received is going to be received and expended, which we know that that's not always the case. Actual results are going to vary. But based on what we currently know, this is what we're expecting for 2026. You'll notice up here is the general fund, and we are not requesting to use any of the general fund unreserved balances, a small return of about $47,000. And then, as discussed previously, if you look down in this section here for the enterprise funds, you'll notice that use of unreserved fund balance, again, to help smooth unnecessary rate increases for those services. Looking at the bottom, right here, you'll notice this is the new self-insurance internal service fund. The revenue coming in are the premiums that are paid by employees and the city for the coverage. This is a fringe benefit, and the premium expense is included in salaries and benefits across the various funds of the city. Premiums to pay for coverage and the cost of providing that coverage, or the claims expense, the stop-loss and other administrative expenses, while they're closely associated, they're very different. The self-insurance fund accounts for what, like a third party providing insurance coverage would pay for? We are just opting to manage that in-house, so we are taking on those related expenses internally, and that causes the increase in contract services in that internal service fund. Those claims expenses and related expenditures are a contract service. There's also a requirement to build a reserve for incurred but not reported claims, IBNR. This is required by Ohio Revised Code 9.833. This is also the portion of the Ohio Revised Code that allows us to establish the self-insurance The reserve was determined by the NFP actuarial team, and they gave us three different targets for that reserve. They had a very conservative, which is the high end, and then they had an aggressive, which is the low end.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? We don't have that. It's very hard to see there. We don't have that paper in front of us with that on it, these photos?
Yep. Well, we'll send it to you after.
But it would be helpful to have it now when you're going through it. I mean, you're pointing out all these things, and I can barely read them. I mean, I can see it, but...
Is it the all-fund?
Can you email the link, please?
Is this the all-fund summary that you emailed, Miranda?
Yeah, it's page two of the all-fund summary.
The PDF that Miranda emailed.
Right.
Page two. And really, all we're focusing on at this point is just this line right here with the newly established self-insurance fund. Could you say that one more time about the conservative tiers, just since we... Yep. Okay. Thank you. So with that reserve that was calculated by the NFP actuariales, they gave us three targets for that required reserve. They gave us an aggressive, which is the low end, and they gave us a conservative, which is the high end, and then a moderate, which is kind of in between. So the low end was a target of $922,000 to have as a reserve. The high end was a $997,000 target to meet for the reserve. And if you look here, where we're planning on landing at the end of 2026, we're actually exceeding the highest end of that reserve, expecting to have about $1.1 million by the end of 2026. So we're funded appropriately to cover all the claims and expenses based on those premiums that are coming in from the employees in the city and generating an acceptable reserve based on the Ohio Revised Code.
So what that reserve will allow us to do, so in the event we, the claims cost more than the amount of premiums that are collected for that month, the reserve is used to then pay those claims. So by having more than the estimate by NFP, that will allow us, in the event we have some catastrophic loss in 2025 or any year of our plan, we will be able to use some of that reserve to offset premiums for employees and the city. That way, you know, we don't incur, like the current consortium we're in is going to incur about a 28% increase next year, so we would be able to help offset some of those things with the reserve. So it's important to have an appropriate reserve as calculated by NFP, and that is a reserve that it is part of their consulting fees, that they look at that reserve every year, make sure the reserve is intact, should we need, so that way we can use it if we have catastrophic year.
So now we, after looking at the impact across all funds, now we're just going to focus on the general fund. How does this meet policy? How is our emergency reserve being set? So with an increase in operational appropriations, there's also an increase to that emergency reserve. You'll see here at the top showing that 25% of our operating expenditures gets us to a rounded reserve of $10 million. That's a $900,000 increase compared to 2025. And then looking at how we meet our associated policy, so unreserved and non-assigned fund balance is estimated to be slightly over six months. That's three times the minimum two months set by policy. In terms of dollars, looking at the bottom of the slide, there is $13.7 million more than the required two months of operations. So now we're going to look at revenue as far as governmental funds. I want to point out that other income includes transfers of about $6.9 million. So if you take that out, the two largest income sources are income taxes and real estate and payments in lieu of taxes. So no surprise that about 72% of governmental funds are funded by tax revenues or payments in lieu of taxes. In contrast, the enterprise funds, which also includes the internal service funds, these are funded by charges to end users. For the internal service funds, the end users are the city employees and the city itself, with the largest being the newly established self-insurance fund. So seeing that 94% is funded by charges for services for the enterprise funds. Looking at our split of expenditures, this does exclude the transfers between funds. We're requesting about $107 million in appropriations. And then looking at that 76% going towards operations, 6% towards debt service, and 18% to capital, this is a good split. It shows that we're not overly burdened by debt and that we're investing in our capital Kind of looking at it by type and what percentage of the budget that represents, we have about, the majority of that is going towards salaries and benefits and contract services, about 66%, 67%. And as a service organization, it would be expected that those are the largest part of the request. So looking at revenue across all funds, we have an expected increase of about 7% or $7.4 million, the largest of that being charges for services, and then it's followed by income tax. Charges for services includes that $4.5 million in administrative charges for services for establishing the self-insurance program. The remainder is anticipated increases for utility services at about $2.9 million. The increase in rates is just preliminary, and the Public Service Department will bring forward recommendations later this year for the 2026 rates, and then if needed, we would make adjustments as required. You'll notice throughout the document, I talk about a 4% increase for income taxes, but this chart is reflecting 12%, and just the explanation of that is actual collections, right? So actual collections are coming in higher than what was projected in 2025, but a budget adjustment is not made because we're not planning on using those excess revenues in 2025. But I, when I project income tax, what I'm using is actual collections to get a better estimate. So it is a 4% increase above what actual collections are for 2026. The final thing I want to point out is that reduction in investment income of, so there's two reasons why that large reduction is there. The first one is just the drop in interest rates, the first one being September of this year, a drop by 25 basis points. It's projected there's going to be another one, possibly two, before the end of the year, and those reductions are planned to continue into the year before settling at about a 3% normalization in 2030. The other reason for the decrease is the use of the bond proceeds. So while we were waiting to expend those funds for the construction costs, they were invested. As we're expending those for construction, that investment income's going to come down because those bond proceeds are being depleted, so that's the other part of the reduction. There will be no more investment income related to those bond proceeds after 2026 because it's scheduled, the project's scheduled to be completed at that point, and all bond proceeds should be spent. Looking at expenditures across all funds, there's a decrease of about $4.6 million or 4%. The largest is in capital outlay based on the capital improvement plan. The increase in salaries and benefits includes additions of staff, and Miranda's going to discuss that later, as well as Kevin will discuss the capital piece. The other driver of the increase in salaries and benefits is also the planned salary increases for 2026. For the police and the communication technicians, that has already been negotiated for 2026 at 4.5%. The steelworker contract expires at the end of this year, so a 4% placeholder has been placed in there pending those negotiations. And then for unclassified employees, for those that are beyond the midpoint or step five of the salary ordinance, a 4% increase has been placed as a placeholder pending approval of the unclassified salary ordinance that will occur later this year. Looking at contract services, it has a 3% increase, but we really need to consider 2025. We had a very large one-time expenditure to the CIC of $5 million. So to get the true increase of contract services, that has to be considered. So excluding that, we have an increase of about $6.2 million or 18%. The large part of that is that implementation of the self-insurance program. The cost to pay for the claims, stop-loss, and associated expenses was determined by the NFP actuarial team and is estimated to be about $3.3 million. The other major contributor is that increase to utility services from the city of Columbus. Based on preliminary data, there's a planned 10% increase to that contract for water and shore services, so that increases contract services there by about $1.8 million. We're going to focus now just on the general fund and the activity that's going through there. You're going to see similar results for income taxes as the main driver of the $2 million or 5% increase. You'll see that $500,000 decrease in investment income as discussed previously, as reductions are expected to continue to the rates. The reduction in property tax is based on actual collections to date for 2025. The county auditor sends their estimates, and we are not going to meet the 2025 estimate that was provided by the county. So when they provided their estimate for this year, I trended it down a little bit to be more in line with what we actually experienced. to be more in line with what we actually experienced in 2025. And then the other large decrease was in other revenue, and that was related to a payment from the healthcare consortium in 2025 for excess reserves. No such payments will be received in the future since we've exited the consortium, and we're going to be managing our own reserves moving forward. For general fund expenditures, again, very similar results. We have a 1.8 million or 4% reduction. However, this also includes the $5 million to the CIC. So backing that out, we have a $3.2 million increase or about 8.5% with salaries and benefits and contract services being the main driver. Again, Miranda will discuss the staffing request. And then for contract services, this includes some one-time initiatives as discussed earlier for movement to the new Civic Center and also beginning the implementation of Argahanna. That's about 530,000 in one-time requests for those items. The remainder is an increase to the flock camera system for public safety, and then just the cost of doing business just continues to increase for public safety, parks and recreation, financial services, and IT-related items. And we're expecting that to continue over the five-year period. This chart shows the activities or purposes for the general fund 2026 appropriation request. Majority is for public safety activities, followed by finance-related activities. Within those finance activities are also all the citywide items, such as our risk and liability insurance, public health contract, and then implementation of Argahanna. Next, we have parks and recreation, followed by public service. So I believe this aligns with the types of services we provide to our citizens that are of most value. We're going to dive into the income tax projection a little bit more. So what went into that projection? We're assuming that most of our businesses will provide a 3% increase to wages for their employees. We have Ortho One to be fully staffed by the end of the year if they're not already fully staffed. Again, that continued economic growth that we're expecting. Small contraction in estimated growth, and that's just based on what I believe a 1% looks like compared to how the numbers are kind of playing out. And then we have that slow decline from 2028 to 2030. And then, of course, collections to date also went into that projection. So kind of looking at the numbers behind that for the general fund. For 2025, we believe that we're going to end 2025 with about 27.5 million of income tax revenue. That translates to about 1.8 billion in wages and net profits. We have that 3% increase, assuming that that'll go up by 55 million, and then net new growth of about 23.5 million. So we're expecting wage and net profits to increase to about 78.5 million. That translates to about 825,000 in retention income tax revenues, and then new growth of about 352,000, giving us that $1.2 million increase we're expecting for income taxes in the general fund. Kind of looking at that charted out and how that correlates to wages, so seeing that direct correlation between wage changes and how our income tax generates. For 2025, you'll see that 13% increase. However, I believe there's an anomaly related to net profits. Net profits increased by, they're pretty much driving that additional 8% increase that we're seeing. Looking at the underlying data, there doesn't appear to be any one industry or business that's creating that spike in net profits. And there's a lot of things about net profit taxes that are outside of our control. It's based on each individual business's pricing policies, their operating processes and procedures, capital investment that they may be making, and the fact that they can carry forward their net operating losses for about five years. So just honing in on withholding taxes as really reflecting the true economic growth that we're experiencing. Withholding taxes increased by about 5.4%, which is right in line with the 5% that was estimated for 2025. So considering that and the growth, that's where we came up with the 4% increase. We're trailing off in 2028 and 2030, going down to 2%, 3%, 2%, and then ultimately 1%. And then this next slide again just shows that correlating increase in wages and how that impacts income tax. Looking at the general fund and the five-year impact that we're expecting, it looks very good. There's no spikes in expenditures or revenues anticipated. It's very well balanced. There's not an anticipation that we're going to have to use unreserved general fund balance or reduce expenditures until 2029. And again, actual results will vary. But based on our current projections and the knowledge that we have now, we're very well balanced in the general fund for the five years. Looking at the special revenue and capital improvement fund, again, seeing similar results for income taxes throughout those three funds. When you get down to the three special revenue funds, there was a change in allocation based on the operating request for 2026. And then nothing else of note there. You'll see that investment income dropping off for the capital improvement fund based on those bond proceeds being spent. And then there were transfers in to the capital improvement fund for the Civic Center in 2025 that we will not need in 2026. Moving along to the special and capital expenditures that are planned for 2025 or for 2026 that are being requested, seeing that trail off of the capital outlay and the capital improvement fund, again, that is a direct relation to the capital improvement plan. Looking at the Parks and Recreation Fund, the main driver behind the salaries and benefits increase is seasonal staffing. So every year, there's a plan that there's going to be certain weather delays or cancellations. Over the past few years, that really hasn't happened. So this was more aligning the seasonal budget request with what historically has happened over the past couple of years. And then the increase in contract services for the Parks and Recreation Department is to determine if providing a shuttle service for the senior center is a viable item to move forward with. The other fund that I just want to touch on quickly is the Public Safety Fund. You'll see that there's a reduction there, and this has a couple parts to it that created this. First is the reallocation. So last year, we had four school resource officers and one community liaison officer that were fully funded for a full year. For 2026, we moved the community liaison officer out. There's a request for an additional school resource officer, but it's only for half a year. So taking a full-year position and then just budgeting for half a year for 2026 for that position. And then for contract services, if you remember in 2025, we were contracting out for the mental health clinician. It was determined that this should actually be an employee of the city. So reducing contract services here, and then there'll be an increase to the general fund to bring on a mental health liaison in 2026. And with that, I will pass it along to Miranda.
Additional information about what Director Berry just discussed in more detail and in written words, it can be found in the All Funds Summary that we distributed on Wednesday. The chart too that we passed out midway through can also be found, a similar chart, the numbers all are the same, on page two of the All Funds Summary as well. And then per the schedule we agreed upon, we'll deliver the rest of the budget book on October 31st. That'll include the remainder of the budget book, including all the remainder of the financial charts. So for the 2026 budget request, it is in All Funds Summary as well on your screen here. The color coding this year, gray are reclassifications, or reclassification means that's an existing employee that we're looking to reclassify from either part-time to full-time or to a different position. The gold ones are new positions. This chart is ranked by priority level only. It's listed in alphabetical order for priorities one and twos. The order does not indicate the order in which we are requesting. It just, we have them divided between priority levels one and two. And the 2026 budget includes, as Director Berry stated, funding for full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions. These positions are requested based on the findings from the staffing study that was completed in 2024 and to provide for efficient city operations. These positions are a high priority to ensure continued excellence in government and to enhance city services to residents. The first department I would like to discuss is information technology. I was here earlier this year and discussed the network analyst, so I'll just briefly go over that in a minute. And then there is a request for a GIS analyst at priority two level. On the network analyst, as we discussed back in August, and council approved the filling of that, we do have a candidate who has accepted an offer, and their background check is in progress currently. Hiring that person before 2026 did not include any need for supplemental appropriation as we had salary savings to provide for that employee. The background check, we anticipate, should take about four weeks, and that employee will be able to start here in November. The GIS analyst is listed as a priority two. Director Carter provided a comprehensive information as to why this position is necessary, and some of those are up on the screen here. This position will help enhance data quality to ensure reliability and scalability. Expand internal use by creating dashboards, mobile data tools, and staff training. This is specifically helpful for the departments of public safety, parks and recreation, engineering, and public service. They'll also, with expanded assistance in GIS, be able to integrate with city software, which includes permitting and the asset management system. The city currently has one GIS administrator. This priority two request is for an analyst level, which is the lower level than the current administrator. So on the next slide, you just have the, for Parks and Recreation, you have the Recreation Division pulled out. There are no requests for the Parks Division or the Administration Division of Parks and Recreation, so this is just a pulled out of Recreation. Again, the gray are reclassifications, and the gold is new. For Recreation, they are requesting at a priority one level to reclassify the administrative assistant at the Senior Center. Currently, that employee is a part-time employee. This is a request to make that position full-time. This position will provide administrative support for the expansion of senior services at the new Civic Center next year. In addition, at a priority one level is a reclassification of a current employee who is a Recreation Coordinator One, a part-time employee, to a full-time Recreation Coordinator Two. This position will also assist with expanded programming as indoor spaces become available. They will expand the adult health and wellness recreational opportunities for residents and as well be responsible for all safety-related training for our 200-plus seasonals that we bring on. Then a last request for Recreation is for two employees, one at a priority one and one at a priority two. This is for two part-time Recreation Coordinator Ones in the senior and adult programs. They will assist with the increased volume of registrations for the enhanced recreational programming that I just spoke about, and then ensure coverage and support for the Senior Center and new event spaces. As we work to move into those new facilities, we'll come out with a new event and building policies that will require a city staff member to be present in those facilities to ensure safety and assistance for our residents. The next department is public safety, a little hard to see on your screen here, but they have a few requests here and a reclassification as well. So the first request is for a management analyst one for records. This is a priority one level and recommended in the staffing study. This position will assist with the management of the new CAD RMS system and various other police systems, as well as be support for increased public records requests and the complexity with which those need to be filled with their various software systems. In addition, there's a request for a school resource officer at a priority one level and recommended in the staffing study. This is due to population growth within the school district, the infrastructure of the new high school, and then to assist with a relief factor for the current SRO programs. Many of our seasoned officers serve as school resource officers, which means they have large leave banks. So when they are off, we want to ensure continuation of SROs in the schools. The last request is a priority two level and recommended in the staffing study as an administrative assistant to assist with administrative responsibilities associated with the CLA accreditation, technology changes, and the expansion of services provided to the community through the CLOs and the mental health liaison. This position will assist in managing personnel files that are very specifically required to be managed per the collective bargaining agreement, assist with required training and audit records that are required to be produced to the state each year, different performance metrics associated with policing standards and Argahanna, and then onboarding paperwork for new employees. And the last department with requests is the Department of Public Service. I was here earlier this fall, I guess, and discussed the maintenance worker one for facilities. That is a priority one and recommended in the staffing study. They will provide daily cleaning and general repairs and building upkeep at the new Civic Center, therefore eliminating the service contract we have with a vendor. That position is currently posted, and we're working through the civil service process as soon as that's done. The other two are reclassifications, which means there'll be a current employee, current employees that can apply for promotion. The fleet foreman is at a priority two level. This fleet foreman will be a lead mechanic and to provide leadership and guidance to the mechanics. They also assist with procurement of parts, fuel management cards across the city, auctions and vehicle registrations. In addition, if you'll remember, a couple budget cycles ago, we asked for an increase in staffing for fleet due to some pending retirements we knew were coming up. Those retirements have all occurred. Mr. Martin is retiring next Friday, so that staffing will go back. It was budgeted for five, it will go back to four, since we've been able to successfully transition new employees and get them the experience they need before our seasoned employees enjoy their retirement. The last request from public service is a reclassification of an employee to a public service manager. This is a priority two level. If you see back on the org chart here, what that will do is the public service manager will oversee the fleet, streets, and utilities division. This will assist with increased scope of services that the streets and utilities divisions are providing. They'll also assist with long-term strategic vision and maintaining cohesive teamwork. This will also allow us to move the streets and utilities division under one superintendent, which will align all the maintenance workers, as you can see there on the org chart, in one, one, we like to call it a list, so the collective bargaining agreement requires that we run overtime in a specific way. This will allow the Department of Public Service and Streets and Utilities to get a variety of projects done. Instead of having two separate divisions, there will be one division for enhanced service operations.
It's my turn now. Excuse me. Good evening, council. A lot of what you're going to see this evening as it relates to the capital, 2026 capital budget, was provided, I believe, at the September 27th Committee of the Hole Meeting, where we're going over the actual annual update to the CIP itself. So I'm largely working from a one-pager here that I'm holding up. This was provided to you folks in preliminary form at the end of September meeting. It's since been updated, some minor modifications. We'll run through a few slides here, and then we'll go over category by category and highlight what some of those changes are. Not necessarily a deep dive, it's just more of an overview, again, because you guys have had the document for some time. So first slide here is just a funding summary. As you guys know from the Capital Improvement Plan, there's a number of As you guys know from the Capitol Improvement Plan, there's a number of different funds that go into funding capital projects. The ones that are listed on your particular, on your screen here are the funds that are, would be tapped for a particular allocation in 2026. Obviously, the largest pot that we would allocate funds from is the Capital Improvement Fund. You see a variety of different TIFs up there, Law Enforcement, Education Fund, and then our proprietary funds in Storm, Water, and Sanitary. The overall ask for 2026 is just under $19.5 million. Our next slide here summarizes each one of our project requests, each one of the $19.5 million in requests into the different categories that are organized inside of the CIP. So obviously, we have, you know, Transportation and Mobility as an example, the utility systems, Parks and Recs, City Facilities, Fleet, and then IT, IT Infrastructure and stuff. Anywhere where you see the red brackets, it's really just indicating that, and the pie chart next to it, we're only showing those, we're totaling those up and showing those as one value, but they're broken out on the chart here. Obviously, when you add a lot of those things together and the percentages together, we feel that we have a balanced 2026 ask across project categories. Our next slide here, and the next few slides break each one of the 2026 requests out by each one of the, each one of the sections inside of the document. So for Transportation and Mobility, which is listed as section four inside of our CIP, we've identified seven projects totaling about $7.5 million. You can see the chart there on the, on the right-hand side of the screen, which indicates for each project, the amount of money that we're asking for allocation for, for, for '26. The one note that I do need to make, and probably should have made it already, as we know, capital projects take a, they're not just on a one-year, one-year stream in many, many instances. Some of these projects can span multiple years. What you're seeing on the screen here is the 2026 ask for a particular project. So there may be some instances where you're looking at a very small number, but you know it's a very big project. Again, you're only looking at the allocation. You're not looking at previous allocation, and you're not looking at future allocation. But one of the things to keep in mind, just like Joanne's slide shows, '26 through '30, and she has the bar chart as, as it relates to the funds, the funds and the impacts and so on, the same thing happens around capital as well, right? So while we know we may have a larger project coming up in 2028, let's say, we know that that impact is going to hit, so we can plan our allocations appropriately in '26 so that we can hit that estimate in, in, in 2028. The changes here from the preliminary chart that was shown to you guys in September, there's about a $800,000, is that right? I'm sorry, a $455,000 difference in the asphalt overlay project. Director Comlink, when he was here, I guess what I'm going to say is two weeks ago, he discussed adjusting the, the street overlay program for 2026 so that we could do some urban paving work, and we had to move some resources around, and the difference there was about $455,000 coming out of the asphalt overlay program, coming out of the asphalt overlay program. And then the other, only other change in this particular category was is we reduced the streetlight upgrades and maintenance. We used to track inside of this same project here, we used to track the painting of the poles inside of this particular project. That is now being taken care of inside of the operating budget for Public Service, so we reduced this line by $50,000. I'll make note that that is a capital maintenance project that is identified in the plan year over year over year, and year over year, it came down by that $50,000. Moving on to utilities. Utility systems here, shown on the screen, is sanitary, storm, and water, all-in-one. My New York accent just fell out of my mouth, I apologize. But we've identified eight projects for $2.1 million in, in allocation for, for 2026. This is one of the projects, or this is one of the categories, if you would, where there's a very large ask in out-years, right? I'm going to point directly to the West Gehandin Utility Improvements Project, $120,000 ask for, for 2026, but there are multiple asks of multiple million dollars in out-years that impact funds. But for prior-year allocations and current-year allocations, $120 is what's needed for, for 2026 to get us through design and some finer, finer points there. There are no changes on this particular slide and the request for the $2.1 million from what I presented in, in September. Moving on to the next section. Next section drives us into the Parks and Recreation area of the, of the Capitol Request. Obviously, Parks and Rec is broken out into these four different categories: play elements and surfaces, park renovations, trails and paths, and pool infrastructure. We've identified 14 different projects. The ask is for about $8 million, and the different changes in this particular section, you'll notice under Park Renovation, 6.2 Park Renovations, you'll notice that the park signage replacement has gone up by about $136,000. Right now, that is, we, we were awarded a grant for that $136,000 increase. That $136,000 increase right now is being recognized against our cash, if you would, our capital fund, until we realize those dollars are unable to, to reallocate that, that, that particular ask, the $136,000 award, if you would, under grant-funded opportunities. The only other add in this particular, in this particular section was the conversation that we had across the day, is that evening, when this particular trot was presented, presented as it related to the Aquatics Assessment and Facilities Plan. I followed up with an email the next day, adding back in, or agreeing with Ms. Padova in her assessment that where the project should be inside of the plan. So that project is now listed as identified. We've also, are also identified, sorry, I'm using that word twice in one sentence, $90,000 to do the next step of that, which is some site assessment work at GSP, no work at HRP, but work at, at GSP, to determine things like geotechnical surveys, if you, as an example, of the parcel itself, to determine exactly the, the exact depth of groundwater and those types of things, and to determine what was produced for the Parks Master Plan, not the Parks Master Plan, but the Aquatics Master Plan, is actually feasible on that, on that particular site. So this is the next step, and we've allocated or asked and added $90,000 to that particular category. Next category here is City Facilities. I have italicized, and the only reason why I'm presenting these here, I've italicized the Parks and Service Maintenance Complex and the Strategic Land for Acquisition for Development. These both are listed inside of the CIP. I talk about them regularly. However, both of these numbers, that $400,000 is coming out of the general fund now. We've moved those dollars over there because they're expenses for the Strategic Land Acquisition for Development, and it would just be assessment work on the Parks, Parks and Service Maintenance Complex, and we can fund those out of the general fund as opposed to the capital fund. So I keep them here for transparency, if you would, I wish, or if you would. I did add the GFs next to the, to the bullet points. And the other note that I would make is that Creekside, the Flood Mitigation and Plaza Improvements Project, while we do know that there is an ask for 20, there will be an ask for 2026, we're not exactly sure what that ask is. We know what the total is. We know what we're working towards. We also know that there's a complex funding mechanism that's necessary for that particular project, so we're still working on what that exactly looks like, and we'll be back before you folks in early 2026 to present more details on what that request looks like. Two more slides here. This is the equipment slide for Public Safety Wield Assets and Mechanical Assets. The only change on this particular slide from what was presented in September was a $25,000 increase to the special equipment replacement line, and that was for the addition of a speed trailer, one of the mobile speed trailers that PD deploys that tells the motorist how fast they're going, gives that instant feedback that they can move throughout town. This isn't one of the fixed locations. This isn't one of the fixed locations. This is an actual trailer. This is just on the normal replacement cycle for a particular trailer. And if you remember back to my first slide where we talked about the education, the Enforcement and Education Fund, that's where the $25,000 is coming from for that particular item. And then the last slide here that I have is the IT Infrastructure. The only IT expenses that we anticipate in 2026 is for our regular allocation for fiber-optic network expansion and redundancy. We've been doing a lot of work in that particular area this year, not just because of 825 and those improvements that are necessary out there, but also, for example, the fiber line that does run down and across I-270, that needed to be replaced when they were doing work on the bridge. So a variety of different improvements in that particular space. I'll also make a note that, right, there's other expenditures as it relates to 825 and standing up new network switches and those things. So we have successfully refreshed all of that equipment during that project. I guess I should probably not say successfully yet. We are in the process of successfully replacing that equipment, and that'll all be brought in line when, when 825 comes up and is, and is functional. So with that, that is, I think that's my last slide.
So here's just the budget schedule again. Again, next Friday, October 23rd, Halloween surprise, we'll deliver the rest of the budget book to you all. That'll include all the appendices as well. Maybe Joanne put a little witch hat on there or something, ghost, I don't know, maybe it'll disappear, okay? And then the following schedule has when we would request that the different departments' questions are asked as well. We understand that you'll just be getting the book on the 31st, so we'll just, the chief will be happy to answer your questions on the fly on the 31st on his budget and Director Becker. With that, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have or any clarifications that you may need.
Well, my colleagues are actually thinking about the presentation. Back on the agenda, with the, the last agenda that was actually shown with the meeting dates and what departments are actually going to be, the Friday before, you know, questions are actually due, so if council can actually have those questions to me by Thursday, and then I'll put them all together and then turn them in to Jeremy, okay? Any questions? Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for the, the very succinct overview and, and explanation of revenue and expenditures projected for 2026. Just a couple of clarifying questions mostly. How many of the new position requests have been previously brought forward? It seems like we've seen a number of these already.
Six. Six. The Network Analyst, and then the five Maintenance Worker Ones for Facilities.
Okay. And there had, but in the staffing study, most of the other requests had been identified in the staffing study. I think you pulled those out and called it out where?
Yeah, in the slide, if they're in the staffing study, the, so the IT positions are in the staffing study, the Public Safety positions are in the staffing study, and then the staffing study in general talks about staffing for the new Civic Center, so that's related to the Recreation positions. And then the Public Service, since we successfully managed the transition of our seasoned veterans as they retired, there is a request now. We used to have a Fleet Foreman. During some transitions, we did not have a Fleet Foreman, but we do find a need to lead our new mechanics out there. And then as well with the Public Service Manager. With facilities going from one person to eight now with a superintendent, a restructure there will allow Director Anvers to spread out some of the direct management of staff by reclassifying the Public Service Manager.
And then, thank you. And I had one other question unrelated to that, but I might have missed it or just not seen it yet. Mr. Schultz identified the TIF funds that will be requested to be drawn from for the 2026 budget, but I do not believe that's an exhaustive list of the TIFs. Were they listed in the all-fund summary, and I just missed it?
So this is the only location in which we're, sorry, I don't have a microphone. These are, what's up there, four TIFs? This is the only four TIFs where we have a 2026 allocation request.
Right.
The others, I'm not showing the others. Joanne can probably speak to the all-funds.
That's the question, yeah. Yeah, so the TIFs are included in the all-funds summary with all the other ones. They're not specifically called out, but beyond capital, those, the planned 2026 budget request just includes the auditor and treasurer fees. It's all contract services, and then any, any revenue sharing agreements that are existing that we have. So there's not any large fluctuation related to the TIF operating request. And those will be in the budget book. The TIFs have their own sections, so you'll be able to see that in more detail once we deliver the book.
All right, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. Chair, just one other procedural matter. Council Office will be included in the November 24th budget review.
Okay, so we got our homework, and we're getting our budget book on Halloween, and please pay attention. And again, the all-fund summary, thank you very much for the exhaustive summary, but I really do ask my colleagues to please pay attention to the summary. If you haven't read it yet, this is really the heart and meat and potatoes of everything. So without any further, I seek a motion to actually adjourn our finance committee.
So moved.
Done. Thank you.